Welcome to our regularly scheduled work session, board meeting for January 10th, 2022, and Happy New Year to everyone. And I do notice that we seem like we got a quick pace for this meeting that's already preset and predetermined. So we're gonna follow the agenda in its quick pace that's already pre-assigned and predetermined. Want to welcome you all. Thank you for joining us. I see Mr. Alan Harkness from our library, Ms. Maria Rickner from our museum. And if we have any, which I doubt, glance in the crowd, any leadership from the schools, you can raise your hand and wave. Thank you all for joining us. Moving right into our public agenda. We do have two citizens signed up. Courtney Wardlaw and Amon Norton. Are you here? Ms. Courtney, alright, you can come to the podium up here. And while you're making your way, I will read the following statement. All official meetings of the Board of Education shall be open to the press and the public. However, the Board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the Board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. The Board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the principal or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address such problems. Welcome.
Thank you.
And there's a, that microphone is right there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Courtney Wardlaw. And after listening to your speech, I do have an issue. I have four boys that are being educated in Muskogee County. I'm here today because two of my children, one who has special needs, and my seventeen year old are being denied an education. Andrew, I'm here to get, try to get my seventeen year old back in school. Northside High School, they won't enroll him, central registration. No one could give me guidance, and I'm trying to
Okay.
prevent him from dropping out.
Alright, so let me, let me get you to Mr. Scott right there in the back?
Okay.
So he can help you with your individual issue?
Okay.
Okay, and so that's gonna be the appropriate starting point. Mr. Scott, raise your hand again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wardlaw.
We'll help you anywhere we can, thank you.
Amon Norton. Alright, we're moving on to our education committee. Ms. Buckner, the summer learning experience, 2022.
We have one item for the
Oh. Just the one item, yes ma'am?
We have one item, I got one item for the education committee, and that is the summer learning program for 2022, and I think Keith is bringing it up.
Is that right? Okay. We're good. Thank you. My name is Keith Seifert, Chief Academic Officer, and want to provide a brief update on the planning that we've done so far. Again, we're not finished with this, but are planning for our summer learning experience for 2022. I do want to say that I do have a couple other folks that are gonna be presenting with me. Casey Hargit, who is with DIS, Lori Watt in curriculum instruction, and Arlesca Castillo will also help out. I do want to say a big thank you to our planning committee. We have about twenty-six members on that committee. Several of them are in here, but we've met probably seven or eight times over the course of this, this, this fall, and we're making our way towards the summer learning experience starting in June. So with that, alright. It is on. Sure.
Pressure's on, Keith, we're on skates.
There we go. Alright. During the meeting, we started out with our theory of action, and we had a theory of action in last, our last summer learning experience, and wanted to go back and review that and make sure that we had the appropriate language for moving forward. And we did make some minor changes to it. We kept our belief statement, which is just under the theory of action, kept that the same, but we made a change in the last sentence, or the, or the bottom lines, the last two lines of the theory of action. And we changed, in, in, in the previous theory of action, we said to increase student and teacher participation to support, that supports, to reduce the, the impact of learning loss. And now we're in a, we've said academic, we wanted to include academic, social, emotional growth to address the impact, and I think the key term here is unfinished learning. There really wasn't any learning loss because the students were not engaged in the learning process. So we wanted to make sure that we, that we stated that it was more or less the unfinished learning. Go to the next slide, please. What you'll see there, I wish we could get that on the, there we go. What you'll see is what, what is being proposed are the dates and times, and it's based on the rationale that's, that we've identified below. As you can see, there, there are seven weeks in the, in the summer learning, and that includes pre-K. If you look, Weeks One, Six, and Seven are designated for pre-K, and Weeks Two through Five are designated for K through Twelve. Again, we're gonna run four hours, excuse me, four days a week. That's generally Monday through Thursday, with the exception, on a couple of weeks with pre-K, we'll do Tuesday through Fridays, and then the last week of Monday through Wednesday. And just to reiterate, pre-K has its own criteria, it's a grant that they provide funding to us for, and we have to meet certain requirements with that. You can see the hours. When we looked at the feedback from principal advisory, teacher advisory, the feedback surveys, they talked about the amount of, the length of time over the course of six weeks versus let's, let's shorten this up and add more time to the day. So we've added more time to the day. We're looking at, with pre-K, it's, it's seven hours a day. With the others, it's six hours a day. We also wanted to look at it, because it's a more of a similar schedule to what, what parents are experiencing right now. So it kind of extends right into the year, so when you talk about childcare, or picking them up at lunch at certain times, it's, it's gonna give them a better opportunity to look at it from what they've done over the course of the year. So it's that, not that much of a change. We've also kept the number of hours, student contact hours, the same. We had ninety-six hours last year, we have ninety-six hours this year. This also helps with building maintenance in, in the support of making sure we clean the buildings, and, and to make sure that we utilize the, the waiver for the free, the free and reduced lunch waiver that, that expires on June thirtieth. So we wanted to look at that rationale and, and design the, the dates and times associated with those. So there, there's the, the proposed schedule, times and dates that we're proposing for this year. Next slide, please. The sites, again, we look at the criteria for the sites. We looked at summer's feeding sites, school and facility maintenance plans, the state designated assignments of CSI, TSI, and CSI Promise Schools, how many participants and pre-K status. And then we also tried to look at it and tried to move some sites so one school wouldn't, or schools wouldn't be hit with having summer school year in and year out. So you can see, all high schools will continue to have their own sites, and they'll host their own programs. In the middle schools, for Baker, Eddie Fort, Rothschild, East Columbus, those schools will host their own programs, and then the associated schools will attend at the host school sites. So Richards will have Arnold come on campus, Arnold students, veterans will have double churches, and so forth with Blackman Road. Aaron Conan Midland will be on Blackman Road site. Next slide. Element, elementary programs. What you'll see is that we have similar situations. We've moved some sites to accommodate those maintenance programs and construction and things of that nature. But we also will have, pre-K sites are designated by the, by the asterisk, and those sites, we will have to move some materials over to those host sites to help support the pre-K programs, and that's generally, it's center materials, which, you know, kitchen sets, dolls, art, man, art easels, manipitives, those type things will be moved to those sites. Okay, next slide. Here's where we're looking at the registration process, and here we wanted to make a change with that, because last year we, we had a, a Microsoft Forms registration process, and a lot of the data was inaccurate. So we wanted to make a change and get better and, and more accurate data associated with that. The first question on there, you're gonna see when's the window, and we're looking at opening it up on March first of the registration, and moving it to April twenty-ninth. So that's a two-month period where we will have a registration. And then we're gonna utilize our online registration process and try to streamline this process. So I did have Casey Hargit, because Casey has been extremely instrumental in creating this, and I, and I do want him to come up and talk a little bit about how this is gonna work, so, and show you how the, how it will streamline and, and make it a better process. Casey?
Good evening. Casey Hargit, Division of Information Services. As we were looking at how to improve the registration process over last year, the idea that we had was to just leverage the existing process we have for online registration, you know, general registration for school. And, and so, one of the reasons why we're doing that, there's several, but one of the reasons is online registration is, is what we're doing already, and this is simply adding one component to that set of questions that we ask during that period of time when a parent is registering their students. As Keith said, just to reiterate, that also allows us to get more accurate data, and it keeps the parents from having to enter in the same data twice. Kind of have a big focus on trying to reduce the amount of redundant data that has to be entered in for registration in general, and so we wanted to, to keep in line with that for the summer learning experience. Let's go to the next slide. It's, it's a little small, but this is what a parent would see in online registration. For each student that they are registering, they see a series of what we call pleats, expandable sections, and we've just added an additional pleat at the bottom for the summer learning experience. And because we've already collected all of the other data that we need to know for summer learning, there's only a couple of pieces that are additional for registering for the summer learning experience. There's a yes/no question per student. Do you want this child, this student, to attend the summer learning experience? And if they answer no, that's it. If they answer yes, then we have a couple of more questions as it relates to transportation, and some instructions on what the parent needs to do depending on if they're relying on the district for transportation, or if they're providing their own transportation for that.
I think, I think a key component here is that streamlined the process, creating an, an additional tab, and, and, and putting the SLE program in there, and they can either just say yes or no. If they choose no, they move on to the rest of the registration. If choose yes, then, then you add the additional questions, and everybody would have to address that. It's not a, it's a, it's a required question. Next slide. Now, Ms. Watt, who will come up and talk a little bit about the, the curriculum resources.
Good evening. Lori Watt, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. Based on the information we received from the surveys this, after our last summer learning experience, and particularly on the resources we used, we decided we would stay with the Scholastic Lit Camp, which we already purchased and have in our, on our, at our site, excuse me. So we will just move those to the new sites, they were housed there. We won't, we shouldn't have to make any other purchases unless there are just a handful of additional students at a grade level where we would need them. The teachers already are familiar with that. We feel like we will have a repeat of a lot of our summer school teachers. They are already familiar with the, with the resource, and they are already in hand, so they can start working with it now, giving them a little more time this year, which was one of the things they requested, and being able to look over those materials and be ready for summer. School Bell Excel, or excuse me, Scholastic Bell Excel, we're going to use that again this year, but that's an online individual school, student program, although they're not, they don't use it so much online. The teacher does, and then we received the books and, and materials that go with it, but most of it is online that the teachers can pull from. We will still have to purchase that again this year because that is on a per-student basis, and we have prepared for that, and Dr. Smith from Federal Programs is ready for us to get those numbers together and get it to him. What we like about that, there are other resources built within the product that gives virtual field trips, it helped us with our attendance last year. It was a really good program that kind of incorporates all of the extra things you would need in a summer school, especially when you have students coming from different schools to one site. It kind of streamlined that for us. In addition, we have these materials already, the Achieve 3000, Lexia Core 5, and PowerUp, and iExcel. Since we will have a three-hundred-and-sixty-minute day this year, we plan to utilize those resources as well in the summer for individualization and personalization, and the students are already familiar with those programs, so we're going to just add that in. We don't want to focus on that, but it will be an additional resource for the teachers to have students work on specific skills throughout the summer. Next slide. We are also recommending some enrichment activities throughout, for, for the summer, and especially this first one is for the elementary and the middle schools. We're at, are going to continue with community partnerships, which I know someone's going to speak about. We're going to be promoting STEAM activities as well, we're looking at some resources there. Brain breaks, that's one of the extra pieces that's built into Bell Excel. It's really a good product where they can get kids up and moving maybe ten minutes, and have these little breaks during the day, as well as those virtual field trips and things like that. So that's what we are recommending they use to, to kind of keep that day moving. The also, also would, on the school-based enrichment activities, different schools are have focuses on different things, so whatever they would like to add is their enrichment activities, then we will be talking about those and get those added into their particular program. Student-teacher ratio, we're looking at a fifteen to eighteen to one elementary and middle schools, and a fifteen to eighteen to one at our high schools. That's what we tried to stick to last year. Sometimes there was a plus one or minus one, just depending on the population and the enrollment numbers, but we're hoping to stay within that student-teacher ratio. Next slide. And then for our high schools, what we're asking is, based on a three-hundred-and-sixty-minute day, that they offer the following, the credit recovery courses, SAT, ACT prep, some AP boot camps that they're already talking about, health and personal fitness, that was something that was brought up, and Dr. Lewis, I believe, brought that up, that he'd like to see some of that offered during the summer, since we do have that three-hundred-and-sixty-minute day and get them out and moving. The fine arts, we're looking at adding some of those to our high schools as well this year. And then, of course, our supplemental instructional resources, Achieve 3000, iExcel, and we're, and I say Lexia PowerUp, because we do have some seats that we have been giving to our high school students from the middle school level to assist with some of those skills that they may have missed during the middle school years. So we have some seats, so they will be able to use those throughout the summer as well. And then again, the enrichment activities, which would be based on the school and their needs and their interests, and of, and the interests of their students.
I do want to say that the literature camp last summer was, had a huge impression on my daughter. Whatever the teacher set it up, like a book club, I think, and they read novels and introduced them to a lot of different works, until we even had our birthday celebration at the, at the Bars of Noble in the coffee section with the, some of those students. So I thought that was quite impressive, and that's a really good job, so I'm really glad we're doing that again.
Absolutely. And I know when we go back to that, you know, Lori talked about that health and personal fitness, that's where we're even talking about offering credit for that. So students can then, those students can then take additional elective credits during the school year. So that's one of the options we're talking about, to offer some of the, some of those credits, so where we can free up some additional credits during the, during the regular school year. Alright, next slide. Here's, here's a list of our targeted partners. This is not an inclusive list. Here's a list of our targeted partners. This is not an inclusive list. We're certainly looking for additional partners, have a lot of schools and a lot of needs. But we're working with our United Way Partners and Jennifer St. John and her group. They've provided outstanding support to help with this process. And we're going to continue to utilize these partnerships. Similar processes we've done before will identify the partners, have a list of their services that can be sent out to schools. And then the schools can coordinate with their partners and also limit the amount per school. So everybody has an opportunity to have those sites go to each of their schools. So it's not just everybody goes to one of the partners, gets stuck at one school. We want them to expand and go out to all our schools as much as possible. All right, next slide. Here's briefly a hiring and staffing process that we're in high level that we're going to talk about, and Ms. Castillo is going to talk about.
Good evening, everyone. So last year was exciting. And we did try to measure some of the hiccups or the gaps that we were able to identify to get our employees' information ASAP and also the supervisors for each of the locations that we are supporting for the SLE. So what we decided to do this year was create all of the postings through our Talent Ed component and also provide responses to the supervisor and the employee that's working the summer program, similarly to what we do with our onboarding new hires. So they'll receive a notification from the system, letting them know what their rate is, their work location, who their supervisor is, and where they're going to be reporting for the summer period. And this way, we'll have some record-keeping autonomy for both HR and our payroll teams. Additionally, we're going to be posting those positions on Talent Ed beginning in February. Once we establish all of the titles, it's going to be open from February through April. But in the event that somebody misses the posting window, we are going to recommend that they be referred to post through the general application. And then the hiring manager for the for the school location would notify HR so we could submit that application into the SLE bucket so we could continue to have people interested in onboarding, since the registration process might look even higher than it did last year, which is exciting still. We are going to be asking our employees that are interested in applying, oh, sorry, I already mentioned that, my apologies. We are still going to be partnering with our supervisors as well to have them be encouraged to speak to those that are interested for the summer program and continuing to partner with any employees that might be either retiring from this point to the start of the summer program to partner with HR so we can make sure that we do have a full recruitment cycle for the SLE. Employees are going to also be receiving information for the pre-K decal guidelines. And again, it's still going to go through our Business Plus process. And we're trying to align those measures along with what we did last year, in addition to how the employees are getting compensated. Thank you.
Thank you, Alaska. And again, utilizing the Talent Ed process and advertising early to make sure that we get enough candidates for the positions that we have to offer. All right, next slide. Here's our anticipated budget. Last year, we had around 6,000 students. We spent $8.1 million on this. A lot of it was staff. It will continue to be staff salaries. We will have minor, I want to say minor expenses, but we will have expenses with partners, community partners, and materials and things of that nature. But the majority and transportation, but the majority of the will be salaries and benefits. And again, this was originally based on the Esser funds and the a three-year projected budget of around that $8 million. Okay, next slide. Transportation, we'll offer transportation for those students that want it and need it and to their school sites. We'll also, pending the number of bus drivers, and if we can get bus drivers, offer that transportation to the community partner site. So we, if we end at 2:30 or 2 o'clock, we want to make sure that we try to get them to their after-school programs at, for instance, for example, Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., things of that nature, to help in that process. But, you know, we definitely will need bus drivers to do that. And then there will be free breakfast and lunch provided. Next slide. Communication, working with Ms. Lawrence to make sure that we get registration dates and times out. That will be done towards the end of January, early part of February. We get that on our website and social media. And we put it out to our local media partners, Blackboard Connect. We'll use all our resources to advertise this. We'll also share some stories in that, those media releases of the successes we had last year and be able to send that out as well. And then the goal is to plan to have the opportunity to get photo shoots, videos, to document the process so we can continue to do that for future advertisements. Okay, next slide. We still want to evaluate and get stakeholder feedback. In the last year, we utilized the Star Universal Screener data. We took the data from the spring, that'll be this spring of 2022, and compare it to fall of 2022 screener data to help and look at the students that attended versus the students that did attend. And if we addressed any unfinished learning or if we increase some learning, we'll look at Lexile scores, make sure and do a comparison with that, as well as students enrolled for the high school students. Look at credits and the number of credits earned, as well as the number of credits earned per student. And then certainly, those are the feedback surveys we provided this last year. We will, again, provide those enhanced versions this year to allow for students and parents and employees to provide feedback again to enhance the program for the for the next year. All right, next slide. And that concludes the update. We will have more updates, obviously, to come. And just wanted to get you up to date to where we are right now and look forward to the opportunity to get started with our students and making sure that they get they have this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sifat. Are there any questions? All right, moving along. Excited. We're excited for another opportunity to reach our students. Ms. Tillery, Policy Committee?
Good chair.
Okay.
I'm going to present 4.01, the Board Meeting Schedule for 2022. This is so that we can approve the 2022 schedule for the regular monthly meetings. The Board Meeting calendar deviates based on the following. February 21st, 2022 is President's Day. June 27th, 2022 is the Budget Preparation. October 17th, 2022 is the Georgia School Board Association Trustee, GSSA. And November 21st to the 25th of 2022 will be Thanksgiving Break. December 12th, 2022 is the combination of a work session and board meeting. And then January 17th, 2023, we will observe Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday.
Are there any questions? Please mark your calendars, update your calendars.
Of the board meetings are when? On the second and third Mondays of
You were saying, just making a note that
I was just making a note that Mrs. Hillary has told us the deviations. So I want to make note that everybody knows that our regularly scheduled meetings are the second Mondays, and that's the work session. And the third Monday is the, third Mondays are our board meetings.
Thank you, ma'am, for that clarification. All right, that concludes our Policy Committee. Ms. Chambers, Property Committee? Now it is?
Okay. Property Committee only has two items. 5.01 is the Museum Report, and it is attached. And five, any questions about the Museum Report? Board members, have you had a chance to review it?
No questions. Just want to highlight.
Najee?
Yes. The black art, the Black is Beautiful art with our local artist, Najee Dorsey. And then in February, the the local civil rights movement is going to be presented.
Okay. Any other questions, board members, about the Museum Report? Okay, here in none, 5.02 is the Library Report, and it is attached as well. Did want to mention that there's a First Readers Program. And starting in 2022, which is this year, we will provide administrative support for the First Readers Program. And when I say we, I mean the library. The First Readers Program is a free book program where free books are mailed out to the homes of all the children that participate in this program each month from birth to five years old. And there are several other service stories attached. Any other questions, board members, about the Library Report? Okay, here in none, that concludes the Property Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Discipline Committee is next. We have no items submitted this month for Discipline Committee. And then Ms. Jackson, Personnel Committee?
It's me.
Hit your mic again.
There we go. I think here we go. 7.01 is the Appointment of Executive Director Program for Exceptional Students. Dr. St. Crystal S. Portress has been serving as an educator since 2004 in both K-12 and higher education. She currently serves as Principal at Bula High School in Valley, Alabama, and has served as Assistant Principal, Special Education Teacher, and Administrator Assistant during her time with Lee County in Alabama and as Assistant Principal for LaGrane High School in Georgia. She has also presented at several conferences on a variety of topics focusing on students with disabilities and overall curriculum. She obtained her PhD in Rehabilitation Counseling and Special Education, a master's in education, and her bachelor's in criminology at Auburn University. Are there any questions? Here in none, 7.02 is Pending Director of Virtual Education.
Yeah, Ms. Jackson, if I may, you may recall, I sent an email last Friday just letting you, reminding you that this position was approved by the board last month in our work session and board action. And we've gone through the process, and this is pending. We have some interviews set up over the next couple of days and hope to be able to bring you that for action on Tuesday of next week because of the Martin Luther King Holiday in order for us to be able to proceed and move forward with the rest of the hiring process and moving forward with the development of our virtual program for implementation next year, first phase.
All right, moving on to 7.03, that's Personnel. And there's two attachments there. Are there any questions? Oh, okay. I just I just have one question, then you. Okay, I know at our, I think it was November meeting when Ms. Chambers asked about the position for Director of Transportation. Do we have any update on that?
Oh, it's me. Hold on.
Is it on?
Yes.
We, Mr. Anderson and I are actually going to partner to take a look at the applicant pool so we can move forward. At this time, we have Tracy Hill serving as the Acting Director of Transportation. And we'll hopefully be able to put a search committee together so we could begin the search. But we do have quite a number of applicants, and we're just going to see if we need to reopen after we review the applicant pool.
A follow-up question to that. So is the applicant pool closed for that position?
I believe it just closed right after the break. We left it open throughout the break so we could expand on the applicant pool. But in the event that we need to reopen it, we will.
Okay, sounds good. Dr. Lewis, I had a question just about the virtual education program. You said that we were trying to open that next year?
That's correct.
Is that next school year or 2023?
Next school year.
Okay.
First phase.
Okay, sounds good.
Are there any more questions? Here in none, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next is our Construction Committee. 8.01 is the Architects for the Projects at Brewer and J.D. Davis Elementary School. Do you have any questions? Recommendation is to approve two WR Architects for construction projects. And 8.02 are is the recommendation for architectural approval for Barnes Gibson's Partners Architects LLC for the projects at Lonnie Jackson and Rockchild. 8.03, the superintendent is recommending approval of Heck Burdishaw Architects for the construction projects at Winton Arts Academy and Key Elementary School. Are there any questions? 8.04 superintendent is recommending approval to reallocate $120,000 for the owner's contingency to complete the Columbus Museum alterations, their project that they have going on there. Are there any questions about that? 8.05 is the resolution to withdraw the HVAC part of the Brewer Elementary School-Winton Arts Academy? You want to speak to that, sir? You just getting ready?
Getting ready?
I got you. You recognize we're on skates. I appreciate you. Okay, hold on.
Capital Outlay Projects.
Okay.
And this is just really a technical question. I do understand the withdrawal for Dawson Elementary School. But is there a reason we would do Brewer and Winton also? I do see that it's going to be reapplied for, but what's the thought process? Okay.
Word of them, Senior Director of Plant Service Center and Director of Construction. It is just a timing issue. We have withdrawn and are reapplying for the 23 application for five years out. The time ran out due to the pandemic and the whole nine yards, so we had to, yes, yes, thank you.
Any questions on the Construction Status Report? Did you want to add anything to the Construction Status Report? No?
Yes.
Yes, sir? All right.
It is a presentation.
You do have one?
Yes.
Perfect.
We're going to make it quick. Good evening. I'm Travis Anderson, the Chief Operations and Facilities Officer. And we are here to present to you our Construction Status Report update. We are excited, I don't have the controller.
You're going to roll it?
Next screen. We are excited about some projects that we just recently completed. The Jordan High School ADA Parking Lot, as well as the Cooler Freezer Addition at Matthews. Next slide. You can see that we're making significant progress on several projects. So we are looking forward to completing the project of HVAC upgrades at Jordan in March. Next slide. We are very excited about Veterans Memorial School Bandroom Expansion. It is moving along. It experienced some challenges over winter break with all the rain, but it is still on schedule for March 2022. Next slide. Carver High School is also on schedule in order to expand their weight room. And so we've been making progress and so we've been making progress out there, making some adjustments because of the rain, but we're moving right along. Next slide. Columbus High School, this is a project that we are really excited about in order to really open up that front entrance. And so if you were to go out there, you will see that there are several trees wanting to be removed. So if you see those orange ribbons, those are trees that we're looking to take down and to really clear that space up and remove those dead trees and to address our beautiful iconic stairwell, staircase. Next slide. So some of the pictures that you're going to see are pictures that were online with our December report, but we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to see all the exciting things happening at Jordan. So there are lots of things happening, and it's a very new environment for our students, and they're actively using some of those spaces. Next slide. I'm just going to roll to these slides fairly quickly. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. So we're really excited about the R2C opportunity with their interior and exterior spaces to expand their learning opportunities. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Our big project, the Stadium Project. So if you've been out there recently, you know that it looks drastically different. Lots of work happening. Next slide. And you can see that our visitor side is extremely complete, making progress, almost ready for our visitors, so they're not going to be very comfortable. Just kidding. Next slide. Our home side is coming along as well. Next slide. The parking lot, made lots of progress with that. Even though we had lots of rain over the break, we were still able to stay on schedule. So we're really proud of our contractors and their resourcefulness to be able to keep on schedule. Next slide. There are several drone videos. This is posted online, so anyone who would like to see those videos, you're able to see those. In the interest of time, we're not going to watch those today, the same images we just saw. Next slide. We have some additional projects that are coming up, and you'll hear from us about those in the future. Next slide. Thank you so much for your support. We appreciate you.
Thank you. And the drone videos on the website. I know it's on the website. I have a little problem finding things sometimes on the website.
If you just search our website, and if you go to the search field and type in for the Construction Update Report, it'll show you. That's the easiest way to find it.
I heard a little feedback. Thank you so much. Next is our Finance Committee. Item 9.01 are the Purchase Exceptions A and B. Textbooks, films, slide, videotapes, newspaper. Any questions on these vendors? They are typical. 9.02 Purchase Exception D, those are some renewals. So continuance of existing purchasing programming that we have. Are there any questions? Sole Source and Volatile Purchases is item 9.03. 9.04 Purchase Order Increases.
Do we know the purpose of the increases? I see Hunter Engineering, a lot of it. Is there just standard increases, or do we know basically why we have these increases? Or things have gone up, you know?
Oh, yeah, everything's going up.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't think it's me. Okay, there we go.
There. Good evening, Edwin Joseph, Director of Purchasing and Supply Management. The pricing increase is based on the manufacturer's price going up based on supply chain and demands of the economic struggles that we're going through right now. So the manufacturers did, and it's also included in the slide, that they provided a notice letting us know that it is a manufacturer increase, not just the distributor or a reseller. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? 9.05 New Budgets. This is from the Gear Program and Division of Teaching and Learning. 9.06 Are the Competitively Bid Purchases. Blanchard Elementary School, it's a dishwasher. 9.07 Budget Adjustments. Also in the Division of Teaching and Learning. CTAE Title 4A College and Career Academy. Then our favorite item 9.08 are the donations listed, the donations list on our agenda where we want to thank all of our public-private partnerships that we appreciate so much in the Musco County School District and how they continue to support public education. Our standard financial statements are the, is the last item. They're attached. Are there any questions? All right, that completes. You want to add something before I get to information? Okay. Okay. Under Information, you will see our, we have two things. Our GSBA Legislative Update, we're going to start having that on our agenda probably at the Information area. We're going to hear from Ms. Chambers, our GSBA District Director, to bring us the legislative updates that are coming from our Capitol Watch so that we can actually address those. If you want to speak or add anything, Ms. Chambers? Okay.
A meeting coming up in April. So it may be May before we have some detailed information, but definitely, as soon as I receive the information, I will share it with the group, with the public and with this Board.
Great. Yes, ma'am.
The GSBA, the updates, when we met in June, are these are these the, in the Delegates Assembly, the delegation meets and then we vote on a set of priorities? Are these, did we go, oh, we didn't do that? Are these the things that we should have done?
You're talking about the legislative priorities, which we, but we did. But we did vote on our legislative priorities. The legislative updates would be, the General Assembly started today, all right? And so as bills are formulating or being presented, you know, Ms. Chambers will update us during the legislative session, the legislative updates.
But these are our priorities too. I mean, as I read those, they're pretty much the same because these are the types of things that we do at the delegate assembly, a list of things that the GSBA wants and the things that GSA, GSBA supports. And at the delegate assembly, usually, they present these, just like this, and then we vote on these.
Yes.
And these are our priorities, and then I guess we're presenting our priorities in the form of?
Along with, I think, yes, ma'am, to answer your question, yes, that's exactly, that's exactly what it is. It's just that as they're being acted upon, because some of those priorities don't make it out of committee, right? They're DOA, right? And so what Ms. Chambers would be bringing us, the information, would be the things that are actually being acted on.
And that's good.
Correct.
Angela, whoever.
From that Capitol Watch that we see.
Actually, Ms. Chambers could just.
Can present the Capitol Watch.
Miss Palms, bring Miss Palms stuff.
Correct. Those are daily. That's correct. And that would be, the sources, you may recall, Mr. Walker would do the legislative update. He'd do something very similar, and he would, you know, also update us from our conferences and to. So that's just to help frame it up. That's not so much just focusing on the legislative part, because they may not make it. They may not get any legs. But the, but the actual activity that's going on during session.
Yeah, I know, and as I said, Miss Palms brings us those that daily.
That Capitol Watch.
What that Capitol Watch is.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then it's that time of year where the second thing on their information, where we select our Board Leadership and our Officers, and that will be next Tuesday. We know we're not meeting on Monday. We'll be out for an observance of the King Holiday, and on our next Board Meeting, we will have that added to our agenda. All right, Dr. Lewis?
Yes, you've already mentioned in fact that we were off on Monday, or actually, our day on for volunteering and that kind of thing in the community. But just a reminder too, we sent parents' communication prior to the holidays regarding our situation with COVID. And as we mentioned in the letter, we're going to continue to monitor local conditions. As everyone is well aware, we've had a big surge in cases, and we'll be announcing our plans for masks later this week, as we promised we would. But given the cases we're seeing right now, the surge, it's pretty clear and apparent that we've got to maintain that, especially since a lot of the protective orders talk about the requirements for masking in terms of quarantining and isolation, those kind of things. So it can be anticipated, we'll continue that going forward. Please, again, rest assured, we all want to get out of these things as fast as we can, but want to do it in a very prudent manner, one that's safe for everyone. So we're going to take that under advisement, again, working in concert with our medical panel.
All right, and she's back. If y'all have noticed, that Ms. Karen Jones is here. I was so glad to see you, Karen.
For the record, it's 49%.
That's right.
So for TRS and all that. And it's temporary.
It's temporary. We didn't agree on that part.
I don't think she has.
We're going to discuss that after the night.
Well, good luck with that, but.
All right, is there anything else? All right, y'all, we are adjourned. Hope your team wins.